Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome participants to the Hybrid Planning Board meeting of March 27th. I'd like to take a call to order of planning board members, Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Ms. Delicio, not here. Ms. Foley, not here. Mr. Olney.
Here.
Ms. Philbrick.
Here.
And Ms. Penny.
Here.
May I thank you? Looks like we have a quorum tonight. I'd like to remind all board members, guests, to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak, and this meeting's being recorded. First item on the agenda is acknowledgement of correspondence. And I have two letters from Lorraine Iomoni on 3/15 and 3/21. Gail, anything else?
It was one correspondence from a municipality, it's in SharePoint. And there was an additional comment, that additional letter that's also in SharePoint. So they're all in SharePoint. I don't recall what they are, and I can't pull SharePoint up at the moment.
Okay.
I think one of them was from Wenham.
Wenham, and then there was, oh, the one you're signing, the document from the registry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. At this time, the planning board would allow any comments from the public with items not on the agenda. Would anybody from the public like to speak? Okay, first item on the agenda is a presentation by the Civic Space Collaborative of the Downtown Work and an online survey. CSC was hired to a Mass Downtown Initiative grant of $25,000. They will be having a citizen survey. CSC will be giving a short presentation to us tonight with comments at the meeting or later being welcomed. Their work will be ending at the end of June, at which time they will be generating a plan for public art, public spaces, wayfinding and signage, and other focuses in the downtown area. Betsy, anything else to add?
Um, I included it in my staff memo. They were also the consultants for Skating by the Sea. And Tiffany Marletta was the lead on that. And they were able to do some of the survey work while Skating by the Sea was going on. But now, there's a survey that's going to be, if it's not already online.
It's online.
Okay, it's online. To get some ideas for downtown in terms of public art, wayfinding and signage, creating pocket parks, and a couple of other things. This grant was written well before I came onboard. And so, it was kind of surprised, everybody I guess was kind of surprised that both grants were funded. And so, the Urban Agenda Grant, which was the Skating by the Sea, the really good news on that one is that there was enough money to buy the skating rink. So that skating rink is gonna be there for the next 10 to 14 years.
Excellent.
As a, as an off-season means to get people to come to Manchester and shop and eat and skate and all of that, so. And this grant, the MDI grant, is a situation where the Civic Space Collaborative is using some existing documents and studies. For example, the VHB study, the traffic stu-, the parking study that was done by the Downtown Improvement Committee. So they're using a lot of existing data to, to develop their plan.
Okay, thank you. And I think at this point, I'd like to introduce.
So we have, Daniel is there.
Daniel Koff. And I've, Daniel, good evening, and I've given you.
And Claudia LaFontaine is there.
Okay, Claudia, welcome. Do I need to, do you want the ability to share your screen? Okay, Daniel, that I've given you co-hosting. How about Claudia, do you need a listen?
That's okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
All right, I'm seeing myself double on the screen.
Close one eye.
You're very popular.
Better two of you than none.
Yeah, this is a new experience for me.
Our numbers.
All right, well, we have a brief presentation for you, just to share what we've been up to and a little bit more than that. So thank you so much for having us here. It's part of your agenda, especially how the planning line's survey is out.
Minimize it.
Yeah, we've, we've really enjoyed working with everyone here in Manchester. So.
No, I didn't want to make this slide.
Provide a brief overview of what we'll be talking about. We'll provide a brief overview of the planning process as a whole. Show you some samples of the public input survey that is live. And talk about how we solicited input on that survey during the Escape by the Sea event. I can show, let you in on some takeaways from preliminary results that were received from the surveys that are, we received online and in person. We'll talk about what we're doing for outreach. And we have some time, if you would like, for some discussion as we talk about next steps. So the overall goal of the placemaking plan is to give residents and business owners in the process of collecting in, input on how they want to improve their downtown, make them more welcoming, accessible, and improve the sense of place. So we plan on creating a plan for downtown that will include three to four components, which we have narrowed in collaboration with Betsy and the Downtown Improvement Committee. So I can tell you a bit about that. And this is all related, as Betsy said, to the offseason event, which we were also working on, where we locked up and engaged people about placemaking during the pop-up event. So this project is a relatively quick project. We started ramping up in December, and statutorily, we have to wrap up at the end of the fiscal year, by June 30. So we are now a little bit more than over midway through the process. These were our meetings with the Downtown Improvement Committee. They've been our main point of contact besides Betsy at the local town. And so, we are, now that the survey is live, is the public input period. And once that concludes, we'll be able to assess the results and provide the results back to the committee in May, so we can finish up drafting the plan and solicit feedback by June. So, there we go. So the study area was defined in collaboration with Betsy and the planning committee. So this, the boundaries here are, include the boundaries from the VHB survey, plus some, a couple extra areas over here and here to encompass the full commercial areas and all of Mass Canoma Park. So when we presented this to the Downtown Improvement Committee, we presented up to seven options for components for us to focus on. And we decided to focus on the four of public art, wayfinding, restrooms, and streetscape furniture. Because a lot of those elements could also fold into some of these other ideas that came up around designing a pocket park. You know, anything that we, all the feedback we received about streetscape furniture will definitely inform any additional, any improvements that you make to your parks in the downtown area. Tactical urbanism was an idea to try out some of the streetscape improvements that are being considered with VHB. And then outdoor dining, again, relates to streetscape furniture. So by focusing on those most pressing needs, including the restrooms, which you hear is, would be a way to make, as a, make Manchester more welcoming to visitors. This was, these are the components we decided to work on. And as you can see, they're related to the park design, parking planning, and streetscapes. So can I show you some samples? If you haven't taken the survey, this is a sample of one of the boards that you'll see. So I'll show you a sample of some of the boards from three different of the components. This one was around restrooms. So we tried to give folks an opportunity to say that they like these existing conditions with the existing porta-johns, or they would just want the cheap option to just put a shed around them to make them more attractive. And lo and behold, so far, feedback, especially during the event where we allowed people to express what they do want to see, we received a lot of red dots on the porta-johns. There seems to be general consensus here that folks are ready for an upgrade, that they appreciated the temporary installations there, and that has proven a need for a permanent installation. This kind of modular layout hasn't been getting much resonance, but mostly these kind of built structures are getting, we're getting feedback that folks are most excited to see them, especially the medium-sized one. People have been saying, you know, this large restroom would be amazing, but maybe a little too much for what Manchester needs. We asked a few questions about what kind of streetscape furniture people would like to see. And on this page, there is one option that is, we are getting a significant feedback that people want to see. And that is, you can, I'll think about what people want to see. So far, people want to see the seating integrated with plants is by far and why number one. And number two is add around back chairs.
That's interesting.
We've also been asking people about public art that they want to see. And especially from the feedback we received at Mass Canoma Park, where we had a lot of parents with children there staring at Captain Dusty's. Maybe no surprise to you that people were most excited to see the option for creative crosswalk in that area. So the Escape by the Sea event was really, really successful. A lot of people came out to the event. We heard from multiple families who said that they came every weekend, that it was open. It seemed like a great success. And we even had our friend from Frozen attend, who was very popular. He filled out a survey as well, which was really exciting for parents and kids and adults alike. So the main takeaways that we have, we are kind of articulating so far is that people are really excited about the potential of, for Mass Canoma Park for additional improvements with artistic bike racks, plantings and native grasses and shrubs, and a creative crosswalk to go to Captain Dusty's. The, it's a clear consensus to upgrade the temporary restrooms that are there. Those have proven that there's a need for restrooms in the area. And folks are most excited to see a medium-sized bathroom. We have asked about location for that bathroom. And I will note that so far, people are saying that of the options presented, people are most excited to see a bath from that Mass Canoma Park near the parking lot. But that could change, survey's still open. There's also, interestingly, a preference, a desire for a parklet. So this kind of goes back to some of those related topics that are dining and pocket parks, that the option for having seating that's integrated with plantings would work really well. And for example, if there was a parklet that was built to take over a parking space in downtown that could be removed during the colder months and installed for, as a kind of picnic area. So those are some of the preliminary takeaways we're finding from about 100 people who attended the open house, and we've received over 50 survey responses online so far.
We're now actually at over 270 responses. So we've gotten quite, quite a big turnout on our online responses.
Oh, okay, all right, 'cause, yeah, the last time, everything I've been saying is based on the first 50. So maybe those extra.
The, the trends are still very similar, but we've got quite, quite a large number of responses since then.
All right, thank you, Claudia. And are the, are the trends similar in terms of demographics of people who are answering? Because that was something I was really curious to see, is that we've received a really great spread of involvement from people who are geographically all over town. Ages is a really perfect bell curve, receiving responses from people of all ages. But I will say that the majority of respondents are women and not men. So if you know men who need to, who might want to fill out the survey, please give them a, give them a heads up that this is out there.
Yeah, that trend is still, is still following.
Interesting, okay. All right, well, the survey's still live, we're keeping it open until April 15. Now, that was the date that was set by the Downtown Improvement Committee. So flyers are posted around town. Evidently, someone is doing a great job with outreach, if we've just received 150 more over the weekend. So we ask you to please continue sharing with your networks. And once the survey wraps, we have dedicated about 10 hours of our time for each component to write up some best practices. We've received some kind of more detailed scopes from the, from Betsy and the Wayfinding Committee about what will be included under each component, for each plan, for each, what will be included in the plan for each component. But feel free to reach out to us if you have any additional suggestions. And so, next steps are to analyze the remaining results. We're gonna be meeting with business owners and other key stakeholders in the coming weeks. And then we'll be developing those project concepts with those key stakeholders, including the DIP committee. So, yeah, you're already doing a great job, apparently reaching out to your networks. We appreciate that. And we're gonna meet next with the Downtown Improvement Committee on May 17th, is our plan. All right, so we're gonna stop sharing and open it up for comments or questions.
Any questions from the board? Chris?
So can you, you've obviously done this for a lot of other places besides Manchester. I guess Essex also, are you working with Essex as well?
Yeah, Essex is our, actually, one other community where we're doing this kind of placemaking plan project.
So are there differences between Manchester and other communities where you've done this in the past?
I would say there's significant differences between Manchester and Essex, yes. I mean, differences in, in the kind of components that you're interested in focusing on. Manchester, there are, in Essex, they have a very different kind of geography along Causeway. And so, they're concerned about landscaping the medians and being creative about wayfinding cues, because they're limited in the kind of signage they can put up on Route 133. In Manchester, you have a lot more possibilities with wayfinding. Do directional signage, and DIP has been working very closely on that, so we can fold in a lot of their recommendations into the plan to make it comprehensive. And also, Manchester's some pressing need for a public restroom is something that Essex is not facing. So the components are really different, I would say, in these two plans.
Go ahead.
Thanks.
Do these restrooms require a lot of infrastructure work? Water, sewer? How, how does that work integrate into that park area?
Yeah, Nate shared a pretty comprehensive study that has been conducted on this. There, there are apparently sewage and electrical hookups that can be made, although it will take an extensive amount of permitting on the town's end, because it is subject to Chapter 91 regulations, since it's a film in Thailand, and other issues as well. So it's not gonna be an easy installation. But it's something that the town can definitely chip away at and work on.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Do you want to?
Sarah?
I guess my question, I have, I have a question and a big picture to start with, and a bunch of comments. Placemaking is an interesting word, and I'm wondering it, placemaking for whom? And the items that you've identified, which are wayfinding, bathroom, benches, are elements of, you know, an art, public art, of an aesthetic. But to me, placemaking is about gatherings and events and people or, so, so that's the first question. It's a question. And then the second one is, you've given, I took the survey, and I felt that there was not a link to the historic elements of Manchester. The existing benches that have been popping up through the longevity project that are already there. And I was on the Downtown Improvement Committee many years ago when one parking space was lost to a bump out. And so I can't imagine a parklet that takes a parking space being successful, but none of that. And I see that this, my concern, or my, I guess my, maybe it's not a concern. I guess I would encourage you, as you synthesize the results, to think broadly about the other issues. Find out about the other issues that are being talked about in other places around town. Historic flooding, you know, with natural flood control, viewscapes. Iconic view from Reed Park right down the harbor. You know, a bathroom there is, to me, seems to me to be majorly problematic for a lot of people. And parking. And make sure that you integrate your recommendations with sort of the pros and cons with a nod to those other issues that may come along. Because I think if you don't acknowledge them, you know, for example, a bathroom at Mass Canoma Park might be problematic for views or would need to keep in the historic character of the town, or whatever. And have the pro of people at the, at the band concerts have a place to go to a bathroom. You know, that's like a pro-con kind of acknowledgement in its synthesis, rather than single-issue kinds of solutions. I think the report will be more successful. So that was a question that I, that I've talked over, sorry. So the question was placemaking for whom? And what is, how do those elements define placemaking?
I would say that this is placemaking for the, first and foremost, I would say people who, the residents of the town, people who have businesses in town, and people who visit. Manchester is already an incredible place. I mean, I've visited many times. I went, one of my favorite days in high school was picking the train up to Singing Beach. So with all my friends. So I do think placemaking is somewhat of a problematic term, because Manchester is already such a great place. That is the, the name of the grant as designated by the state. So that's, that's why we're using it. I will acknowledge that we have not yet spoken to the Historical Museum. And we do intend to reach out to them during this outreach period. So the, and I hear you that we did not show the existing benches in the survey, which was a bit of an oversight. Got put together pretty quickly after we were doing the event. So we will definitely include those in the final plan. And I like your suggestion to include more of a pro-con approach to the findings. Because as you mentioned, there are both opportunities and drawbacks to any solution. And so I think it's important that we are, that we present one of those sides of those, of those issues.
Is it whose Historic Commission rather than the museum?
Right.
Well, the, that being stated, the Historical Society has indicated that they have an interest in more kind of plaques or signs with historical information.
Yeah, great.
And so, so Civic Space has known that. So we probably need to get you into the Historical Society as well as talking with the Historic District Commission.
I'm sorry to make one other comment. I think that also in terms of the wayfinding signs and maybe historic signs, I do think that you can bring a lot of value to some consistent design. I know that the, there's the, the signs that popped up from the CPA that are large. There's one for Mass Canoma Park, and one for Singing Beach, one entering Manchester, that I know some people feel are out of keeping with the, you know, there's a kind of a hodgepodge of signage. So I think that you could create a, kind of a uniform sign standard. And then, and there's also zoning around signs, which is another whole issue.
Yeah, I.
Some side.
Um, I love, I love the enthusiasm around historic and wayfinding signs. Well, no, we just have about 10 hours for each component set aside. So we won't be able to do a full wayfinding plan. But one of the deliverables we were considering was to help you put together an RFP, so you could, and some cost estimates, so you could solicit a design firm to put together that comprehensive plan, if, if you think that would be of interest to you.
Laura?
Hi, thanks for an interesting presentation. I'm thinking about placemaking, you're showing both kind of temporary measures, pop-up, pop-up parklets, the skating rink, things that are kind of temporal. And I think that those are very good for finding out needs and activities, what people are interested in, and kind of trying things out. It's a great way to pilot things, so I like that. I think maybe separating what the more permanent changes are that are proposed, because we do want to prevent a hodgepodge. So I, you know, I wouldn't want to see a set of artistic bike racks here and some wayfinding signage over here. And if we're gonna think about how Mass Canoma Park, you know, to accommodate some of these things or any of our streetscape, it wants to feel integral, wants to feel coordinated. And it wants to, because Manchester is already special, it should really feel specific to its place. And it should serve a function. So, you know, like artistic bike racks, I see them around lots of places. Kendall Square, you know, they might have a sort of science theme to them. But I would just caution us that they can, you know, let's, let's be careful that we don't do things that are kind of decorative but aren't terribly functional. They don't like work all that well as bike racks, or they're sort of overly cute. There's so much good stuff happening in the kind of scenic realm that I think we do want to kind of avoid clutter. And we want to be careful that we should do things in kind of a cohesive way that, for the more permanent things. that, for the more permanent things, you know, really deserve a more of a design study. I can imagine that a restroom in Mascanoma Park doesn't have to interrupt the view. I mean, I know there are areas with kind of trees and trubs already. You could imagine that you might take as a model one of the antique bathhouses from, from the town, that the Manchester Historical Society has one behind their museum. And that could be a model for a public restroom for Manchester. So it should really feel site-specific. I think of Conomo Park, or rather Conomo Point in Essex. I don't know if you all looked at that, but there's a little park right on the end of the point there that's just very simple with some furniture and a deck out over the water, kind of views of the water. But it feels so specific to its place, it's very simple. But it just kind of magnifies the place that is already there and makes it more accessible for public use. So I think that, that kind of thing is a large benefit. And if we do need to go through Chapter ninety-one, which we would, I think a restroom is the kind of project that could demonstrate the public benefit that is required for Chapter ninety-one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, comments are noted about wanting cohesiveness and to avoid clutter. I can, again, emphasis on helping the Historical Society. Could not know they have antique restrooms that we could potentially use as a model, so.
Yeah, I think it's a changing house, probably a bathhouse, but really, you know, unique to this town in terms of its aesthetics, that would be one thing. One more thing I wanted to add was the seating with planters. Great as a pop-up thing, somebody really has to own a planter. They can look pretty shabby quickly and they do require time for somebody to water them. So I think seating with plants is actually different from seating with planters. So planters are great as a kind of element that comes and goes away again. But as a permanent infrastructure, I would say, again, it should be more of a cohesive, you know, larger plan for where does furniture want to go and what, what plants might be putting in the park. Just a comment on the planters.
Susan, anything?
Anything I was thinking about has been mentioned.
Okay.
I have one more.
Oh, yeah?
Flags, pennants. This town is crazy about flags. I think anything we can do to encourage them would be appreciated.
I think that could fall quickly into the visual clutter if you don't, if you don't be careful.
Flags are your flags that come up and go down, you know, they're.
Yeah, I guess, are you talking about like banners on light poles?
Yeah, that kind of thing, yes. Like all the American flags, we hang all over the place.
Well, there's two pieces to that. One is, I'm not sure that Daniel would know that, and Quadi would know that at Memorial Day and the Fourth of July, there are flat, there are holes in the sidewalk that are, that where flags are put.
That's true, yeah.
And then they are raised and lowered every day by volunteers. And so I guess that kind of goes to my prior point that there are already a set of things. And I agree with Laura. I, my sense when I took the survey was, yeah, I liked the artistic bike rack but not necessarily in Manchester or what would it be? And I also would encourage you to skim through the master plan because town character was a big piece. And I didn't get the sense that your imagery reflected a thoughtful set of things around town character. And so to, again, for, to what end? One of the things though that the town, that the master plan somewhere in there did contemplate, and I can't remember if it was a recommendation or just a discussion or never made it. But nonetheless, one of the members, there was a lot of, there was some discussion about public access and public sort of a walkway along the shore. And Mascanoma Park has that lovely walkway that maybe could be improved, made accessible. As, and the harbor and the ocean are certainly part of Manchester's character and part of its place and public access to that. And there already are a whole series of benches from Captain Dusty's around the point that are all the same, probably many in need of levels sprucing up, some of which are memorial benches too. So again, if they were replaced, maybe a thinking about.
Here's what I found.
Sorry. The, the treatment of the memorial aspect of benches, if they're, if they're permanent structures, I think is important. There's, there is a new, relatively new, I think Ralph Kershaw memorial there at Mascanoma Park with the granite pieces, if you look at the bandstand, it's off to the left. And I think how does, maybe that's a larger Mascanoma Park question, but how does, how do those things appropriately fold into a cohesive Manchester-specific plan? So. One last thing is, I did take the survey, I've done many surveys, and I think your survey is great for general direction, but it is not comprehensive enough to make policy decisions based off of it. I think it's a nice, it gives you a sense of what people like. They like plants, they like a smallish building, they like, you know, traditional seating. But because it's in single-issue images and people take it quickly. And I think your sampling method, while we're getting a lot of response, it's people who went to an event or people who are on social media. That's how people are finding out about it. And those are not a fully representative, any more than any other surveys, I guess.
Should we have some surveys at town meeting?
I guess you could, I just.
Hand them out to the men.
Touche! So I think it's fine, I think it just have to recognize the, that, it's limits.
Yes.
And that's okay. And I always like to see us, you know, any good survey has a limits to the data section.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Absolutely. I mean, that's why we're here is to acknowledge the surveys is somewhat general and kind of fun to go through. But certainly needs more follow-up and direction from key stakeholders like yourselves.
Daniel, I assume lighting is not part of any of this, correct? Lighting signs or lighting the parklet?
No.
Correct. Lighting is not part of this. We've been.
Correct.
Yeah, that was an extra component we weren't able to pull then, given the debates about lighting that are happening in the town already.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you. Very nice.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Um, I'll put my, my email in the chat and you're all free to let me know if you have any additional questions or comments or anyone that we should be reaching out to during this period. But thank you very much for your time.
Okay. All right, next item would be the next steps on our amendments to zoning. So I wanted to put this on the agenda for us to begin thinking about which, if any, of these amendments we want to move forward or if we want to add any new ones to the special town meeting in November. Some of these that in their current state still require some more work. So I'd like to begin discussions on these at our April tenth meeting moving to our first public hearing in June as per the schedule that Betsy laid out. So again, I, I don't think we want to really discuss anything tonight, but I just wanted to get this on the agenda to begin thinking about it as we can, as we move this forward.
Can I just make a comment about that? So that schedule, I ended up laying out just because I wanted to figure out why it was such a crunch time and at various town meetings. And the thing is, is that if you start as, if you start looking at zoning articles in September, it's too late.
For April?
For, no, for, for November.
Oh, 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 I see.
So it, it's kind of one of those things, it should be a constant review of, there's a lot of good work that's been done and it just seems like you have to jumpstart it. So for Fall Town Meeting, we, we probably have to have a hearing before everybody leaves for summer. And then, starting in September, go right back into it again. And in the meantime, you know, a handful of us can be working on various articles and putting them through legal counsel. So it's, so that it's not this craziness going into the fall. Or again, in the Spring Town Meeting, if you start it up in January, March comes really quickly and that doesn't give you enough time.
Yeah.
So it seems like if there were, right before, you know, in early November, there was a public hearing on articles and then right in the beginning of January again, you'd have, there'd be a lot more discussion, a lot more wiggle room. And, but that schedule was just a suggestion. I know Becky was getting a headache over it, but.
Well, no, I think it makes sense. It makes sense. Last time we, you know, both times I think we were a little bit rushed, so. I'm sorry.
Well, certainly if we were to advance the administrative section and the adult entertainment and ADU, we would now have already had three public hearings. At this point, we've had three public hearings on those, those articles. Some of the details have changed, but the, the substance. So, and I think that what we will have in June or soon after the April town meeting is our complete zoning. And so it might be strategic to, in June, have a primer on zoning for the public. What, how the zoning, what is zoning, how it's organized, where you can find it, how it affects you, what are the, what's a special permit, what's a by right, just in the big picture. Because I think the problem is as much about people not understanding that. And even if we have that forum, many people still don't understand it. But nonetheless, it will at least be an effort. And that we've never, at least in my tenure, paying attention to this, we haven't done that. And so I think that's a piece that would be helpful regardless of what bylaw changes we put forward. And we could put some thought, maybe it's an open house. That open house where people actually, where we do a presentation and then people walk around on different issues or some, you know, some more, both sort of talk at you and participatory kinds of things. That's just a thought. But the articles, it is important to remember that those articles that we, that we've tabled for the moment have had three public hearings.
I, I still think we need to have a session where the public can ask us questions specifically about the articles. You know, what does this mean? Does this mean I can do this? Can I rent this? Can I do that? You know, those kind of things. So I think that outreach is kind of important still to have, so.
And the advantage of doing what you're, what you're suggesting, having something in June is that what, once you have the public hearing posted for the town meeting, you're limited to the scope of any changes to that scope. So for example, in the ADU, the original, one of the ADU law, bylaw proposals we did for November had a comprehensive set of regulations around ADUs, you know, a lease and other things. And people responded that they missed that in that simple change, in the shortened version that just restrict, reduced some of the requirements for the ADU. So we had, actually people were further confused, even though we simplified it. So I think your point is a good, what is, what do people really want about, you know, and then that we have this whole family dwelling, I mean, employee dwelling unit thing, which is actually what all of the ADU, what we're calling ADU zoning board. You know, so the ADU one has a lot of complexity to it.
Laura?
If we were going to do a presentation on sort of general, what does zoning mean to you and what is zoning? I think I'd combine that with a specific zoning section that we're trying to get feedback on and I'd make it three slides at the most. Because it, I, I think it's not going to mean much to people until we get specific about one of the articles that we're working on. And then we take, say, senior housing, we do a, you know, three-slide overview of what is zoning and maybe it has a roadmap of like, here are the ones we've already changed, here are the ones in the parking lot that we know about. And, you know, schedule all the next three years of ones that might come before you and then some, you know, we, this is kind of a never-ending thing, right? Once you decide to take a film, we know they're on, sections that we could look at. But I think if we could just really, you know, boil it down to very three short slides at the beginning and then say, okay, now we're taking senior housing and we're going to go through it kind of clause by clause or section by section to say, maybe just put the text up and you highlight the parts that you think are most interesting or relevant to people. And then we could do a sort of a, you know, like a canned Q and A almost about questions we anticipate getting. And we have this Q and A up on the board so we can start the discussion with that and then open it up to people. But I think really trying to walk people through one section at a time or one, one zoning article, if I'm using the right language, and helping people, giving them a chance to really understand and sort of dive deep into one because and maybe, and maybe have series of illustrations about, you know, an ADU looks like this. You know, very simple sort of plans and diagrams kinds of things to visualize.
Okay.
So I have a quick comment. So there are only two besides the senior housing, the accessory dwelling units and the administration. There were two others that we didn't get to in November. One of them is non-conforming uses, which although very controversial, is not that complicated really. And the other is the cluster, making the cluster available to smaller than five-acre lots, which I think would be very beneficial to the town. So I'd like to consider all of them.
Well, there's also.
Flood plane.
Flood plane.
The flood plane. Well, the flood plane is going to take longer anyways than that.
Not clear.
I have, I have an idea on the non-conforming use issue, which is that we meet with town council and Sarah Melish and find out if the building, if it is correct, if what is written there is being correctly interpreted. First.
Well, we need the building inspector.
And the building inspector. Have a meeting with a, and maybe Chris and I can volunteer to do that. And the second is town council to advise us on the applicability of case law in light of our current non-conforming law. Because she may say, well, it says this, but case law says this, therefore, the building inspector. So I think that there's a possibility that at least part of the amendments to that Section seven can go, can go away, we can simplify the, rather than extracting the whole thing and we can just amend a certain section to make it comply with case law.
I think meeting with town council and some.
And the building inspector.
And the building inspectors are great.
So I'd, I'd volunteer.
Well, I, I'd first like to see what the board wants to do on which, what we want to bring forward. I don't want to bring like ten articles.
No, what I'm saying on that one, rather than bringing it forward, it may be a matter of, of having this meeting to find out.
Okay.
Are we correctly, the way we.
Who drafted that initially?
Well, they, the, the amended version is a Mark Bobrowski version. But the, the new one and the existing one almost say the same thing on the issue of.
Exactly.
On, whatever the issue is.
It just clarifies it.
And we're, I suspect that we are, the ZBA and the building inspector are incorrectly reading our existing bylaw. So we can avoid going to town meeting on a controversial topic by getting clarity about what is. So we can avoid going to town meeting on a controversial topic by getting clarity about what is currently written. So I I'd like to start with that and then report back here on those two pieces of that nonconforming, because that nonconforming bylaw has come up prior to our, any of us being here. Gary Gilbert brought it up and it went down in flames. And it's hard to understand no matter how many seminars we have, we're all still somewhat confused. And if the existing bylaw does what Mark Bobrowski anyway advised, because it almost says the same words, um, then so maybe we can get Sue to help us do as an attorney.
I'm happy to.
That would be great. So so if we, the three of us can make a little subcommittee just on that topic to meet with through Betsy with council and and sort of sort that one out to determine if we even need to do it.
Okay, why don't I make a motion to create a subcommittee to study the nonconforming use lan- current language in the zoning bylaw and see if anything needs to be done.
Of Sarah, Sue and Chris.
Sarah, Sue and Chris, yes.
Second.
So um, just a little bit on process here, um, this was not on the agenda to vote on today.
We can vote it next time.
I thought I might wanna do that for our April tenth meeting.
Isn't it about how the zoning bylaws that are gonna come up and what we're gonna do about them?
This particular one wasn't, but.
It wasn't listed, but it's just, it says proposed warrant articles discussion.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
Feel it's okay?
I feel it's okay. That's my opinion. We have an attorney here.
Well, why don't we um, we can certainly invite our other two members to join the subcommittee if they are interested. We'll have public meetings.
Um, okay, so motion made and seconded, I will listen to the formation, any discussion? Uh, take a roll. Uh, Laura?
Discussion, just so, just trying to find out what the purpose is. So if the council says we've been interpreting it wrong, it actually means this, then there is no need to change any language in it.
It may just be that we need to change it, but in a different way, you know, less controversial way. And before we go to all the trouble to think about what the language should be.
This is getting to by right and what's under, what's allowed by right for nonconforming uses, getting clarity on it.
Yes.
Get a clarity on it from council.
Report back to this.
Yeah, seems like a useful thing to do.
First, let's take a roll call, Chris?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, unanimous. Okay, now be, uh, just a little uh, primer on next week's annual town meeting and Alan is here. Just for the board's uh,
Alan's fine here.
Information, I've asked Susan Filbrick to speak on the adult entertainment motion. And I've asked Chris Olley to speak on briefly on the passing over of the two articles.
Three articles.
Well, two, one is not even, didn't even go.
Didn't, correct.
So um, just wanna give you an update on that. And then Alan, did you have any other comments?
I don't think Alan's on.
I see Alan. This is Jim.
Okay, left. Okay, any other?
Do we need to vote this uh, report from Betsy to Alan, listen to, it's a, it's a um, requirement that in advance of uh, bylaw um, zoning amendments being, we have uh, on the warrant, we have to submit a brief report. So I think um, Betsy has drafted it in this email. So I think we just move to, uh, I'll move to accept the uh, email of April third as the planning board report for the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Just one question. I remember that Alan had asked for the date of the discussion and then the vote, and that's the same date, the February twenty seventh.
So February twenty seventh is when the article to move the adult entertainment.
We voted.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, roll call vote on the motion, Mr. Olley?
Yes.
Miss Chris, Miss Tenny?
Yes.
Miss Milbrook? Chair votes yes.
Thank you, Betsy, for doing that.
No problem.
Yes, thank you.
Very welcome.
Yep.
Uh, just an update on the MBTA community, uh, section three A.
So I have sent out a letter to all the boards and commissions that are supposed to be represented and I've asked them to.
The task force.
Um, yeah, for the task force, I've asked them to make an appointment within the next two weeks, because we will start after town meeting.
And I also sent you all in a copy of the slide pack that I received during this Citizens Planet Training Collaborative held on Saturday, the eighteenth.
I did put that in chairpoint.
It was, yep.
Chairpoint, so it had some good information in there if you haven't had a chance to go through it.
It was pretty much a repeat of mostly of the other one that we did where was there any new um, information, new discussion or new?
Well, the new discussion is you either comply with the law or you're breaking the law, was the word from the state at that meeting.
It's very general, yeah.
So uh, that's kind of the new thing.
Betsy, what do you think about the um, has that ever been done before with chap, with um, zone, on other zoning issues? Has that been the?
I've never seen it. I've never seen such a mandate.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a interesting, just procedurally, you know, you're not judging the the content or the, but I think procedurally, it's an interesting um, that the, that the chapter forty requires that zoning changes such as this require a two thirds vote of town meeting. And that would imply that uh, zoning changes are therefore subject to local jurisdiction, right? Um, if we wanna change a district or adopt a new zoning map or make a.
Well, my understanding is that, and I'm not quite clear on it all, but as it relates to housing and affordable housing, it may be just majority vote.
I think that's right.
And it's, but if if you have a mixed use development, then it's um, two thirds vote. Or it's really, I I haven't quite got my head around it.
Nonetheless, majority or, it would be important to know as we, whether it's two thirds or.
I will do a little research on that, but there were some changes when they ended up moving forward on forty eight, three A, which is the CBTA zoning.
Okay, so maybe that is a majority, but nonetheless, my argument is still the same.
The majority vote at the conference.
The town meeting has, a town meeting has to adopt changes to zoning and um, the the threat of, you know, of litigation or certain provisions of.
Well, there's a number of communities that said, we can't do it. Um, Brookline, um, Middleborough, um.
Brookline said they can't do it?
Brookline is moving forward. I was just reading about it today, targeting their Fall Town Meeting. They, they're already having public hearings on their proposed plan.
But there was an article in the Globe a little while ago that said Brookline was.
Are you thinking of Berkeley, maybe?
No, I'm thinking of Brookline, Mass. Um, with, where in the Globe anyhow, a number of people in Brookline said, we're way over built as it is. So now we're gonna adopt this new zoning?
Well, they do have a um, an opposition group that's formed. Um, but you you could be right. I was just reading about Brookline today. I'm sure there's a lot that I haven't read yet.
Well, there's, I'm sure, you know, I haven't been totally up to date on it, but um, I know that Middleborough, M, um, M A P C ended up apparently doing a study that showed that it wouldn't be feasible for them to do it or possible for them to do it. So um, I guess a number of communities have already said, you know, we we can't do it.
What I heard, what I read was there are two hundred seventy seven communities that are affected by this and five have said they would, five out of the two seventy seven so far, but.
So far.
Yeah.
So Brookline's under the gun. Any rail community has just to the end of this year.
Right, this year, right.
So we have the extra year. But my feeling is the board here should come up with a s- a solution that keeps the character and has the density and we get the best bang and and keeps the grants. And then it would be up to the voters to say yes or no, um, whether we don't go through with this or not. But I think it's our due diligence to come up with something.
Well, I think that both your housing production plan and your master plan advocate for studying more diverse housing. So use it as an opportunity.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, well, you were saying that, I mean, I don't wanna articulate, but that if we, if, you know, in a year from now, there is litigation and so forth, if we have at least made a good faith, faith effort to comply by putting forward a compliant plan, uh, helping people to understand it, assessing its pros and cons, that we, it seems like we're better, much better off than if we just throw up our hands and say, can't do it.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, the state is more likely to work with us.
Right.
Um, and right now, they're not being forced to work with anyone.
Right.
You know, but all they've said is there will be no exemptions, but they haven't said that they won't work with any of the towns.
Right.
So we applied, sorry, but we applied for a sixty thousand dollar grant with one stop to have some of the analysis done, because I'm not familiar with some of these programs. So I'm, I'm planning on being kind of the boots on the ground person here to kind of feed information in, but um, um, anyhow, um, I'm pretty confident that we'll get some funding to, to help in the analysis.
Laura? May I? Yeah, um, so there's a lot of energy saying spent on, yes, we can, no, we can't, and speculating about that. I think we're going to learn when we get down to site specific, site analysis and look at the designated area and overlay the flood maps. Um, and look at, you know, where we might want housing to happen. That we'll see what the numbers are that we can accommodate and we can also put uh, controls on there that um, can uh, you know, limit the scale and the um, mass and so forth of these um, elements of housing. We might also propose that, you know, we're looking at it and the half mile radius doesn't work in the direction of the water. And let's propose we go a little up the hill instead. So we could come back, I think, with a proposal that is a modified response to the kind of um, you know, the half mile radius is a good rule of thumb for how long it takes to get from here to there in five minutes or whatever, right? But if we say, actually, the half mile circle doesn't really apply, but if we look more in this direction, we wanna get out of the flood zone and so forth, we will see that we can comply to X degree and how many units we can achieve. And and let's just go through the steps and find out what that reveals. I'm just saying yes or no.
So in one of the many discussions I've had with Chris Klutchman about this, who is the state's lead on this, I ex- repeatedly explained filled tidelands.
Yeah.
And um, Manchester is required to have thirty seven acres
Yeah.
of this and seventeen, or fifteen or seventeen are supposed to be within a half mile radius.
Yeah.
And she said maybe it's just not feasible and.
Make an argument.
I mean, shouldn't wanna be
Right.
you know, kind of overly uh,
Right.
conveying that everybody's gonna get waivers, but um, I think if a good faith effort is made to study it.
I think the good faith effort is the key. It wants to make it technically feasible and show what can technically. But I also think it's important to say, because there's a flood zone or because there's an area that is subject to future projections of flooding, that we're not spot zoning for multifamily housing here. Every use that we pick is just as vulnerable to floods, so it can't be, you know, no multifamily housing here, but other things are okay. We have to make that same distinction with our flood maps.
It's very curious to me. I was watching a Salem, Mass. Conservation Commission meeting the other night and um, I do it in my spare time. But anyhow, what was curious to me is um, there's a developer who came in, um, it's a, it's like a seventeen acre site. All of it is floodplain. Um, they're doing platform buildings, parking underneath. Um, the existing use is an industrial use. They're proposing two hundred and fifty units of housing. And of those two hundred and fifty, fifty are sixty percent area median income.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, I don't know if it's gonna sail through, but um, that's double the um, affordable housing requirement that the ta- that the city normally has. Um, I'm looking, they're basically building up the site
Right.
so that there's less water and.
Putting vulnerable, less vulnerable uses at levels.
But it was a real eye opener to watch this meeting because the entire site is um, it filled, filled uh, marshlands and.
I mean, a lot of our town, our entire downtown, parts of it are.
I mean, pretty much the the rail line
Yeah.
over is.
Historically, how rail lines were built.
And and the Reed Park and Mascanoma and, yeah, so.
I have one comment on this too, which is it may be that the existing downtown complies physically. It's just that our zoning doesn't. So if we just made the zoning comply with what's built out there, we may just skate through this without doing anything.
Or at least close.
Close, yeah, as long as it's close.
Right. Because ten Summer Street is not zoned for the density that is currently built there, for example.
Half of downtown is nonconforming.
Right. So if we were to simply, I think that's a really good point, is if we were to simply zone our existing downtown for what is assume that it, assume that, you know, the tornado came through and we had to then rebuild um, uh, the flood or whatever, that that if you at least, if you want to build it exactly the way it was, the current zoning would not allow that, except for the clause that says you can rebuild in the nonconforming and within two years or whatever it is. But um, but that's an interesting point, like what, and I think uh, yeah.
But when you say not do anything, what do you mean? Because ultimately, you need to get to by right.
By right, so yeah, so if you made everything that's in the downtown allowable by right.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
That would maybe do it, I'm not sure. We'll have to do that analysis and see.
With the consultant, do that, get the maps.
I mean, downtown's kind of interesting, because the building that Barrett Real Estate's in used to be a finest supermarket and that used to have another story on it, right?
Yeah.
That whole thing.
And then where the apartments are on Summer Street, the beginning of Summer Street across from the train station, there used to be a big um.
Horticultural.
Yeah, the horticultural hall there.
Yeah.
No kidding, really? Wow. We had all those.
I mean, it was a really huge building. I don't even remember that building.
I think it was torn down before.
Torn down.
I don't think it was torn down before I was born, but I might have been, you know, saw it.
Okay, that was a little more than I thought we would discuss, but good talk. I um, like to now give the floor to Betsy on this proposed public hearing, which is our next meeting on regulations. Also, maybe, um, so we're not duplicating effort with your subcommittee and just talk a little, talk that through and how that's going. So um, Betsy, did you wanna?
Sure, um, so several months ago, um, I started looking at the fact that the planning board doesn't really have rules and regulations on kind of generally how they run their meetings. Um, we were advised by legal counsel that if we were, if the board were hiring an outside consultant, there needs to be very specific rules and regulations there. Um, and then I did a little more digging and found out that the present fee schedule and the um, all of the application forms are actually in a appendices in the subdivision rules and regs, which makes absolutely no sense. So. So, um, what I did was, um, I was originally going to develop standalone, um, documents. Um, so maybe some upgrades to site plan and subdivision with checklists and things like that. And then, um, at the last meeting, I asked about how the, how we, how the subcommittee, planning board's subcommittee on rules and regulations would interface with me. And I was told at that time that we were probably working on different things. Um, several days later, um, I received an email from Christina, which indicated that they really wanted to see something on a par with the Harvard, Mass. Rules and Regulations. So what I did was I took all of the documents that I had, um, and made a table of contents and, um, just started going through as much as I could of, um, of, of those documents. So, um, let me just pull it up.
Yeah, that's great.
So what, um, I put on SharePoint, um, is a fairly lengthy document, um, which has, um, a table of, it's in very rough form. Um, and the reason, um, there's, so what I wanted to do is at least get the first part of it in reasonably good condition. And then what I do is I bring over documents from the subdivision, uh, appendices. So, um, anyhow, um, I had some general provisions, conduct of planning board meetings, protecting zoning bylaw amendments, which I left blank because what I'm in the process of doing is taking Mass. General, taking it right out of Mass. General Law. Um, site plan review, I explained what it was, the process, the rules and regulations, special permit, the process, the rules and regulations, groundwater recharge special permits, subdivision rules and regulations, which we will attack before everybody goes away for summer vacation. I've already talked with engineering on this. Um, and then the appendices, which includes a fee schedule, um, an application for special permit, an application for groundwater protection special permit, uh, earth removal permit, site plan review, um, and site plan and special permit include checklists now. Um, and then subdivision forms and driveway access approval form, which is probably being updated. So, but it, the goal here is to get everything in one document so that nobody's digging in the back of the subdivision rules and regulations to say, um, you know, where is this document, where is this fee schedule? Um, one thing, um, in doing this is I also did a short analysis of about eight or ten communities on what everybody's fees were. And, um, site plan and special permit are woefully low. And we really don't charge for the legal notices and the mailing out. So actually, um, the planning board budget is somewhat subsidizing some of these permits. So, um, for example, site plan review is a hundred and fifty dollars, special permit's a hundred and seventy-five. Um, and most communities are charging three to four hundred dollars. So, um, my understanding is that this board could make a recommendation to the board of select, the select board, and then the select board is, um, either yays or nays, um, the fee. So, um, so anyhow, um.
One question I have is with the fees, I mean, this is a detail, but the fees for special permits with the, for the planning board special permit, would those be the same fees for the zoning board of appeals, special permits?
The zoning board of appeals is an independent board. They can adopt their own, you know, they can make recommendations to the board of, the select board on, on what their fees would be. I'm just concerned about this board.
Okay, great. I just might, because we have so many special permits that are for things that may not need a special permit, given the prior discussion, you know, in our homeowners for.
So anyhow, that's kind of how I've set it up. It's not totally complete, but I figured I would get it to you to start looking at it. And, um, probably by the end of this week, I will have a revised document. We have, um, scheduled a public hearing for April tenth. And the reason that I think it needs to be moved forward is all of the documents that are in the subdivision documents. It's just really bogus. And, um, particularly with, um, cell signaling coming in. It helps to have checklists. It helps to have regulations that say, this is how we're hiring an outside consultant. Um, fair and square, you know, this is how we're doing it and, um, so.
So is the public hearing for the entire body or just for a section of it, do you think?
It's, um, it will be for the entire body as soon as I do some fill-in. And it's mainly right now, I'm doing a fill-in of zoning bylaw amendments. And then I'm re, um, reconfiguring some of the stuff in the old, uh, appendices and the subdivision regs.
Fabulous effort. What a ton of work. That's great. Um, I have two questions just having glanced through it. One is, well, one was in reference to fees. Um, I have seen examples where, um, if we increase the fees to, you know, cover, uh, the costs that we're really bearing as a town, that makes a lot of sense. I have seen in other towns, I think Cambridge, um, for certain fees, there is an income limit. So there is an exemption for, uh, residential fees with a certain income limit if it's a hardship for someone to have to pay those fees for, you know, whomever those folks might be. And then, um, I glanced in here, I think it was in site plan review, but there was, I noticed there was a reference to the requirement that the plan be prepared by a landscape architecture, a landscape architect, civil engineer or a certified landscape designer. Does that ring a bell, that term?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know what a certified landscape designer is, but the license for a landscape architect or a civil, civil engineer is a lot to do with public health, safety and welfare. And so when we're doing, um, site plan review, I think we should not let it be
Okay.
by someone who's not licensed.
Okay, okay.
Particularly where it also addresses stormwater and things like that, a landscape designer.
Well, I'm assuming that stormwater is going to be, you know, a licensed engineer, certified in Mass. Um, so, uh, okay, so.
Yeah, it's just either, either or.
I mean, as, as you take a look at this, because it's a lot to wade through.
Yeah, that was just in a glance, yeah.
Just flip me your comments, um, um, I, I, I understand that there's certain parts of it that don't look pretty. Um, and I'm going to fix those up, but if you can get me content.
Okay.
Um, just, you know, send me a quick email if you have any questions on content or comments on content. Um, then what I'll do is I'll include them in the tracked version, okay?
Great.
So what, um, is there any duplicate, uh, you're staying away from the planning board rules and regulations that they're coming up with?
Well, I asked to participate, but then I didn't want to drive to Manchester on a Wednesday, so, and it wasn't a Zoom meeting.
Right, it was one of the things, if you, if you guys could make that a more of a hybrid meeting.
So, yeah, so I can't speak for Mary or Christina, unfortunately, but I can tell you that we did meet last, two Wednesdays ago, I guess. And, uh, I think there is some overlap, unfortunately, but I don't think it's tremendously difficult to fix. Um, and you did hear the word about the Harvard, uh, did you look at the town of Harvard?
I did look at the town of Harvard, um, and, um, what Christina sent me, um, wait a minute. I can, um, I can haul that up. Okay, so she sent me on, um, the fifteenth of March. She sent me the Harvard document. And pretty much, um, it's, uh, chapter one thirty-three, planning board procedural rules and regs, Harvard, Mass. Adopted, revised, blah, blah, blah. And so there's the general provisions, there's approval not required, there's fees, there's subdivision plan, there's special permits.
So that's what you're doing.
Site plan, that's exactly what I'm doing. Um, and, um, erosion control, uh, scenic roads, which we don't have here, protective bylaw amendments, which I'm including hearings, it's already been discussed, design review board, which we don't have. Um, I have kind of used it as a template. Um, my concern is that there's some language in here that is, um, I'm not a lawyer, but there's language in here that I think is a little, um, suspect.
So in terms of operations, internal operations of the planning board, we did have a big, pretty good discussion about it. And she, we had a lot of comments. She was, she took notes. She was going to write them up and send them out, but she had, of course, hasn't done that, given what's happened.
Right.
But this, this is more about how the, not as, the, the document that Betsy has prepared is really, is a little bit less than, I think, I mean, not less, they're, aren't they two separate things?
Well, they could be two separate things, but.
I don't think they're two separate things at all.
Well, what, so this, so what we're working on as a committee was how the board is organized, uh, how we take votes, um, things about, um, a conflict of interest.
I've included all that.
Yeah, okay, so I, so that's all in there. And we also, the other thing, we, uh, I was asked to get in touch with Greg and see if we can include in the regulations the play of town planner's role.
I included that.
Oh, so you did, okay.
The Mullen rule's in there, um, uh, hybrid meetings is in there. I mean, you name it, it's in there. It's like the whole refrigerator.
So now I'm going to put on my merry hat and say, well, this is all well and good, but we're going into a public hearing before we've really discussed any of these regulations ourselves.
Well, in response to the merry hat, I would say, um, this was, could be discussed for the first reading, which is also in there, two readings. Um, so this could be first read.
And then continue the public hearing.
And we could have the second reading at the public hearing on the tenth. But I made it very clear at the last meeting what the interface was. And I also made it very clear that time was of the essence, given that cell signaling wants to come in and file in April.
And we can also, with a public hearing, amend these.
Exactly, exactly.
So this is not, um, in, you know, etched in a stone tablet.
So in this public hearing, you're, are you going to present these rules and regulations? Because that's sort of procedure.
If I'm not stepping on anybody's toes.
No, I think that makes logical sense.
So the only thing I was going to just suggest is that make sure we do get it on, maybe as a PDF on the, with, with the agenda would be the easiest way to, to go, to be available to the public in advance. Maybe even put it, we know that it's going to be on the April tenth meeting. You could actually put it as a attachment there even in advance of the agenda. Or, um, with some sort of, you know, draft agenda with this as a PDF, so that the, the public has access to it.
Right.
Now, and then perhaps, um, have you done the public?
Well, the public has access to it now, and what I'm hoping to do.
How, do they have it?
It's scanned on, on the town's website.
Oh, it is, okay, great.
We've been doing that since February.
Okay, so it's in the meet, tonight's meeting packet?
It's in, on SharePoint, and if you go to the planning board website, it's a scanned package. But what my goal is, is to see if I could get the bulk of the comments by this weekend so that I can make changes to it and, um, so that people have a good week or so to take a look at it.
So my advice is if you make changes, that you.
It's going to be tracked.
Okay, but you take down what's on the, put the fresh one up on the website and get rid of the old one.
Okay.
Because it starts to accumulate all these versions and it starts to get confusing.
Yeah, I think there's two things. One is I'm looking at it, fabulous that we have the meeting packets there, um, available. But I think that it's important that you have the meeting packet so that that's, that's a thing that, that's, that was ready for tonight. But then I think there needs to be a document, you could just put it in the same place that is, that is entitled Draft Regulations for April tenth Public Hearing.
Okay.
I think if you just, um, and then you can keep updating, take down the old one and put up the new one as you have them available, amended, version one, version two. And I think you can use the exact place. And then in the agenda, it could say, run down the agenda, for, for material, see this URL.
Okay.
Um, and then, but I think it should be the ni- the title, instead of just having it be meeting packet, it needs to have the.
It needs to be solo.
It needs to be solo and it needs to be named so that people can find it.
Okay.
But I think you've got, what you've got right here could be put up for the, um, could be put in that place right now.
Okay.
Which would be great.
Okay.
Do you have the keys to do that or is that Tiffany?
That's Tiffany. But if I, if I get the bulk of it done by Thursday, I can hand it over to Tiffany.
My choice, my rule.
I wonder if she can put some kind of special banner or something up there. So the public is aware there's going to be this public hearing to discuss the.
All right, well, let me see what I can do.
And I have one final question, which is.
Can we write a little paragraph to the cricket directing people to that or something for tomorrow? Is that something possible?
Uh, I could probably do that, yeah.
FYI.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Driveway entrances, are they included in this?
It's in there.
What is it?
It's in there.
So has Public Works looked at the driveway entrance?
We need to get Public Works.
That's the old one.
Right, we need to get.
I'm putting that in as a placeholder with the idea that your committee was working on driveway entrances, so.
We didn't talk about it, well.
Pardon?
We haven't talked about it at all.
Is that part of your, your, uh?
So I just drafted, I just drafted the driveway entrances to give to Mary so she could propose them or change them or whatever she was going to do.
I think we want engineering input on this.
Yeah, we certainly do.
Great. Well, what is there is the existing document, and I'm using that as a placeholder. We can adopt certain elements of this to get things rolling.
Right.
And then we can revisit and hold a new public hearing.
Yeah, I think that the old one was when we were doing the driveway entrances and it just needs to be modified. At least, needs to be modified to just reflect the DPW, if there, and the language from the cha- zoning, the, the general bylaws that.
Yeah.
I may have enough time to talk with Nate about this because we have, um, a situation where it's not a driveway entrance, but it's a, a situation with, um, it's actually a groundwater one. So we, I, I can perhaps make the groundwater stuff there.
That's the next meeting, right, the, uh, public hearing on, on.
So, so Nate is aware of this curb cut entrance thing we've talked about in the past, so.
Yeah.
Well, we need to get them a draft so they can bleed on it, whatever.
So you had one that you sent me that was the most recent, so.
Use that, see.
So I can use.
See if he has any comments on it.
Is that the primary? Is that the one?
No, that's not primary. Mary's, I don't think, I think Mary's not interested in doing it.
Well, I'll, I'll see if I can work on that and, and try to get a total package done by the beginning of next week at the latest.
I think that the new. I think that the new bylaw is actually quite clear about the criteria for the driveway entrances. If you, if you look at the new bylaw that we passed in November.
Yep.
There was quite a bit of round and round about that, and we've added quite a bit of language that, about the criteria that have to be looked at. And if they don't comply, then it comes to the Planning Board who, and
But there was
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll look at that, and I'll see if I can fold that in.
Scale of plans, topography.
Yeah.
There was, I don't think we talked about a lot of the engineering details.
Yeah, but it was sort of, and it was one, you know, sort of the goals of the, of the, of the entrance. I think one of the things around driveway entrances that you missed in all of that discussion and in our visits to driveway, and is that a lot of times the building, if, if, if a property wants to change its entrance from here to over here, they often begin building their house, finish building their house, and then come for the driveway entrance. Once the house is built with the, with the, with the garage on this side of the house, and then when you look at it, the driveway entrance is now very close to another a corner, a blind corner and that kind of thing, so I think one of the issues around the driveway entrance that at least I think we could improve upon is when in that process it is applied for.
Before the building permit.
Before the building permit or concurrent with the building permit, because we did have one which, that was
Already done.
Already done.
That was, that's in the, I included that in the draft regulations.
Yeah. So, and I think from Paul's perspective, there's access to the site and the plans comply with zoning. You know, that's
Yeah.
So
Yeah. Okay, anything else on this?
It's kind of like the kitchen sink is in there.
I see that, and I'm thrilled, I think it's great.
Yeah, we can launch it.
We needed the kitchen sink, and I think, let's not let the perfect be the end of the good here.
Right, so I will continue to work on that and really focus.
So you want comments on it by this week?
By this week?
Yeah.
Okay, do that, great.
Okay. Um, thank you, Betsy, planners' report within our packets, anything you want to add right now that we haven't talked about already?
Um, hang on. Hang on, hang on, um, yes, MIT.
Oh, yes.
MIT, there's a professor or instructor at MIT, Jeff Levine, who is in the planning group, and he put out on the Planner's List serve that he was interested in a he has a class that it's a class that it's a two-year class apparently, and it's on community, wait a minute, let me, let me get the email, that's probably the best one. So where's the original one? Hang on. Uh, I can't find the original email, but he teaches a class in community, creation of community, and so he sent out an email on the list serve. And so I responded to him and basically said, you had a request on the Planner's List serve about using a community for a two-year class of yours on community growth and planning. I did speak with the town administrator, Greg Fetterspiel, and he gave me the go-ahead to approach you about the town of Manchester by the Sea being a participant. The town has its challenges, flood plain, sea rise, lots of filled tidelands, in the town's commercial district, plenty of ledge and blasting, all with the average house price of about 1.2 million. We'll be studying MBTA zoning over the next two years, as well as trying to figure out other locations for diversified housing. With ninety-five percent of the tax base being residential, over thirty-five percent of the population and over sixty-two by 2030, there's some interesting issues. Planning Board will be entertaining a large commercial industrial use, cell signaling, a drug research company over the summer months for a special permit and site plan review, so that adds to the mix. So I explained who I am and that the board is a diverse board working on zoning amendments, developing rules and regulations for variety of purposes, and with several members working hard to keep the group focused. If you're interested, give me a call. So then Greg added an email, he says, hello, Jeff, the big question is, we have, we have the big question we have is how to diversify our housing stock while preserving the character of the community. Over time, we have lost the smaller homes in town and have become a town of relatively large, single-family homes. Obviously, the MBTA zoning requirement, chapter forty-eight, section three A is front and center, needs a detailed analysis. Regardless of where we end up on this, we need new strategies for creating more diverse housing stock for town, for the town. Seniors lack options to downsize and stay in town, singles and couples without children have few options, and young families are hard-pressed to find a starter home. Add in the challenges we face with rising seas, bigger storms, and the solutions are even more complex. How a small town can create a more balanced mix of housing options while protecting its small town character would make a good case study. Thanks for your interest in this. I will also add to you that when my father was the chairman of the Planning Board here back in the seventies, he would come home and we would have this ongoing discussion. So some things never change.
He was just, we have the minutes from those meetings.
It's kind of weird, I see his handwriting in a lot of documents, so, but this is how I, how I'm here. So anyhow, we're hopefully going to have a discussion with him on Thursday. Because he wants to talk with us a little more about our proposal, and he's narrowed it down to a couple of towns. So anyhow, that's kind of
Is it graduate student class or undergrad?
It's graduate.
Okay, good, yeah.
Do you know more?
What?
Well, I know that the, that it's a graduate department, not an undergraduate department. I don't know personally, no.
So having worked with many, many, many students, I think that being a very, being narrower, I mean, I don't narrow and specific is, tends to get a better outcome. And the three A zoning and the diverse housing has so many layers that I think it's probably the most interesting to them, but I also wonder if there's an opportunity for the climate resilience as a as a segment of the work. I don't know.
I would go ahead in the same direction, as far as at least an overlay of the climate resilience, because there are so many being, interesting studies. Boston Green Ribbon Commission and thinking about rising tides and rising sea level and stronger storms and how to think about future development and change, especially along waterfronts to accommodate that and still provide public access, and I think diverse housing could be a piece of that as well, but with all the work that Town Green is doing, are they studying Manchester? I see articles all the time about Gloucester, Rockport, Essex.
Wait, who's doing it?
The Town, Town Green and the Cape Ann Climate Coalition. Is that where the Charles Waltheim study with Harvard is attached to?
I do not know.
I don't know either, but I see a lot of it in the paper about those towns, and I wasn't sure if Manchester was tied into it, so I thought, I thought maybe there might be a connection there.
I mean, I can contact them and we can chat.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a very interesting issue to me, given the fact that you've got, you know, a big chunk of downtown in Mascanomo Park and Reed Park and
Yep, there's a lot of potential there.
That whole channel that came through from the harbor up to almost C Street.
Right. And what I found really interesting in the, oh, report on it, more in the Coastal Zone Management study is that a lot of the vulnerable parts of town are actually town that's, the land that is town-owned or municipal-owned. So, which gives you some possibilities than, you know, as opposed to being mostly in residential use, say. So to be able to do some big thinking and visioning about that, I think would be really exciting.
Okay.
Yeah, if you live, even if you further limited it largely to the town-owned parcels. The water plant. All the town hall land. And I, and I also think there's, there's just the whole Mascanomo Park as a, you know, that, the waterway, the public access along that, which is also in the master plan. The, the bathroom.
Yeah, all of that could be
Yeah, all those things, the, the public space is the public-owned, visit, I just, student projects are better when they're narrower.
The project's good.
But they could be, but it, but it could be exciting to have student student energy around those ideas.
I sometimes find the student projects are if they're visioning and they're not super constrained by, you know, we need to check this box, we need to, you know, we don't if you're trying to just get them to solve a problem, that can be a difficult thing to ask of a student project to do, but if you're trying to get lay a bunch of constraints and challenges in front of them and say, you know, give us some visioning exercises for us, then I think you can get some really exciting ideas. They're not concerned, they're not paid
Because they're not constrained.
They're not constrained and they're thinking
I'm thinking chapter ninety-one and all this other stuff, and they're just out there.
Right, so there's, I mean, they do, some constraints are helpful to them and to us to kind of tie it back to reality, but it's not like we're hiring them to do something.
Right.
We're asking them to generate some big ideas.
And they're gonna learn too, that, that's the other thing too.
Yeah, that's a big learning for them.
Right. I mean, my original thinking on it was it, it might be very helpful, it might provide some solutions or at least some vision
Yeah.
for what some of us may be missing, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I just, sorry.
I was gonna say, I would be curious to know how he structures this class, whether he, whether students work in either alone or in, in groups to
Well, there's eight of them.
To do various, if he wants eight projects, or if he wants one project that he would then work together on.
That they all work on, yeah. Well, those questions will be asked, trust me.
Yeah, I have a couple of ideas if there were
Yeah, if they pick us, maybe he should come in.
Eight projects, or even four, and they're teaming.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, it's a single plan, is actually, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just gonna say that, like, the Green Ribbon Commission of Boston, you know, some of these really big city climate change plans about public access and public use of the waterfront to directly mitigate climate change, I haven't seen anything like that at a kind of smaller town scale.
Was there a study done?
The, the, what did you say?
Was there a study done, there was the whole, uh, Sal Sancho's watch did?
Yeah, I think they might be connected with Cape Ann Climate too. But anyways, I've been seeing, you know, I've been reading a lot of these studies for larger cities, Cambridge has done a lot around, you know, climate vulnerability.
You've done some outrageous things.
Yeah. Really interesting work, but taking it to the scale of our town would be, I think well, it's kind of a manageable size for a planning class too, right, that's also what's nice about it, you're not trying to solve for the whole city of Boston.
Well, in fact, this was a while ago, Cambridge did a whole study on what would be underwater, you know, in twenty thirty or twenty forty or whatever, and Cambridge Port Riverside were, which is all filled tidelands, were, are underwater, and they had adopted a bylaw that would allow accessory dwelling units in basements. And now these basements are flooding, so they kind of got rid of that law.
Yeah, well, they've done a lot in recent years with climate vulnerability and thinking about where development happens and
Yeah.
And that kind of public health aspect of it.
Yeah.
Well, we just sat through a study, right, about what was being flooded, when we went to the Select Board's meeting, we sat in on that.
That was so boring.
Yeah. So, okay, thanks.
That's the thing I wanted, yeah.
So I added this, a little more definitive definition to this Liaison Committee update, so I think we talked about most of these already, but I, I know these are all ongoing things to keep my head straight on who's working on what, so Coastal Zone Management Steering Committee, have you met it all or?
There's been one meeting of the committee that's been assigned to the Coastal Zone Vulnerability Committee, so we've had a meeting, and then the same presentation was made to the Select Board a week or so after that. And so they are in their, the, the group, the consultant group started, I guess they started gathering some existing conditions in November, the committee members started in late February or March.
Is this a town group or is this a regional group?
This is Fasen O'Neill, the Fasen O'Neill Study, it's a whole study. So they presented existing conditions analysis, we made some comments, one of the comments I had was that a lot of the area that you're showing that is vulnerable is actually appears to be municipal-owned land or, you know, and/or has infrastructure on it, like the water pumping station and the transformer station.
The sewer.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, the old
Yes, uh, sorry, the waste water.
The sewer pumping station.
Um, the electrical equipment by the train, which is not town-owned, but, you know, town parking lot, there was a lot of the land that was had been filled tidelands, of course, because that's where that happens, and was still under municipal control, maybe sixty percent of it or possibly more. So that was just interesting, it kind of focuses on the area around Sawmill Brook and Harbor's Edge and the low-lying kind of filled land sort of behind the railroad station. And it shows flood, it's beginning to show flood projections for, I think, you know, up to twenty seventy-one percent storm, that kind of thing, so they are gonna go on to some alternatives analysis in March and April, and then come back with a draft recommended action plan sometime in April or June, and finish and report out in June, I think they may have to finish by the fiscal year.
Are they just looking at the downtown, or are they looking at like over by Black and White Beach where, in other areas where, where there's
They're focused on the inner harbor primarily, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. On the Harbor Management Plan Working Group, I think the Select Board last week voted you, Sarah, onto that, I think you're in. And I haven't heard, have you heard about them having a meeting or what the story is on that yet?
I did not able to attend that.
Oh, you weren't at that meeting, uh, maybe
Is there a charge or a specific goal of the Harbor Management Plan?
Um, I would ask Greg right now, just because I missed the last meeting.
I'll, I'm sure I'll hear.
Kathy's on if you want to, I think she was at that, Kathy, you have a comment on that?
Hi, no, I don't, it was, I, I do know we kind of renamed it from a Harbor Master Plan to a Harbor Management Plan.
Harbor Management.
So I think buy-on is probably the best source of information on the exact scope where it currently stands.
Okay, thank you. Okay, FEMA maps, flood plain bylaw, that's you and
So Mary and I will eventually be working on the FEMA flood plain, updating the FEMA flood plain bylaw. And the maps were given, as I said earlier, I sent an email to FEMA representative to see if we could get an extension of time for comment. We did get maps, the maps are with Sue Croft and I believe we have the other set of maps, but I want to try to work to get them online.
Okay. Thank you, Rules and Regulations Subcommittee, I guess we've heard enough from you.
Certainly have.
I do have one comment about rules and regulations.
Okay.
Sue pointed out to me that when she was sworn in, that the town clerk, um, gave her that, um,
Committee handbook.
Committee handbook, which is now, thank you for bringing it on, the sheer point.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, it seems to me that even though it says it, we're governed by it, that we, you know, maybe we could put it on the agenda to just vote to adopt it, um, as our own. I mean, it's sort of, it, it's part, it's.
Well, we can fold it into, I meant to do that, fold it into the rules and regs.
Maybe just, um, reference it, put it in by reference to those.
Yeah, reference.
That would be, that would be the most, uh, uh, comprehensively do it, but.
That's a better way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then as it gets updated, we are then current with it.
Right.
But I thought it was good, and I think there are a couple of things in it about, um, particularly around, you know, if we take a vote, even if it's not unanimous, that we, that we, that's the vote of the committee and that we stick to it. So, that's.
Good point. Excellent. Um, MBTA Communities Task Force, um, as Betsy said, I think we want to get going. We're behind the original schedule set, but I think they want to get going on that right after town meeting, so, um, you guys will be, uh,
Good, that'd be great.
Yeah.
The Water Resource Task Force, uh, Sarah attended the last one, gave a report. There's, the next meeting is Wednesday, which I will attend. I have nothing to report. Um, CPC, uh, is kind of in a sleeping period there. Projects go before annual town meeting next week. Any other, um, committee, uh, comments? Okay, so, um, approval of regular minutes 213 and 222, um, anybody, uh, read them?
Yep, so moved, to move to approve.
I'll second.
I sent both of them.
Any discussion? Roll call, Susan?
I was not here on the 13th, so I can only vote on the 22nd.
Let's go on the 13th roll call, um, do you have enough quorum?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, okay, uh, Ms. Sterling.
Yes.
Ms. Gray.
Yes, yes.
She wrote yes. On the 22nd?
No, on the 13th now, yeah. Oh, no, that one, we did the 22nd, sorry.
Move to approve?
Yes, I'll move to approve.
Seconded it?
Seconded.
Ms. Filbert?
Yes.
Ms. Sterling?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, minutes approved, Gail. Other matters, so I spoke with Steve Carhart of the Downtown Improvement Committee today.
Oh, good.
Uh, they will be presenting soon to the select board an overall plan of the downtown, curbing, lighting, sidewalk, signs. Um, I invited him to one of our future meetings after his presentation to the select board to present us with what, the same presentation for our comments and suggestions or questions, so, uh, and I understand you are the liaison.
I am.
Been going, and Betsy, you've been going regularly. Thank you.
Well, can I make a suggestion on that?
Yes.
If our, well, it's lovely having, um, tonight's meeting without, you know, applicants and being, being able to talk about some of these issues, but in the event that we might have that happen in the future, maybe we could, we could have a joint meeting with a select board on that topic and then be able to take a hiatus on, on one of our regular meetings, just if that worked out. We'll see.
Sounds good. Maybe we could attend the presentation.
Yeah, depending on this.
So we need, um, so.
Okay, yeah, one, I have one more topic before this business.
Yeah, yeah.
So our next meeting is, is an additional public hearing on 117 School Street application, which is in your packets, has been for a while. And Gail scheduled a sidewalk prior to our meeting, um, on, uh, April 10.
10.
So that's at 5 o'clock at 117 School Street.
Where is 117 School Street?
117.
It's, um, if you're at the intersection with Arbella, uh, Pleasant Arbella School, if you head out of town toward, um, the golf course, toward Essex County Club, it's the second or third property on the right. It's a white house, um, it's 117.
Okay.
I thought it was at 5:30.
I think it said 5 o'clock.
Looking for the, is it in today's?
It's our meeting date.
It was in an email. Oh, okay.
So it's April 10th?
April 10th at 5.
I will not be able to make a 5 o'clock meeting.
Um, I did ask that the, um, DPW and/or the building inspector weigh in on this application,
Yeah.
and I assume you'll have some information for us on, on
I will, I will.
overlay district or wherever it is and what the rulings are.
Yeah.
And this is about groundwater or something?
It's a ground, it's in a groundwater, um.
Oh, it's a discharge thing.
Right, but if you read their reports, well, I won't comment.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, Betsy, what's, uh?
So, uh, the board received a letter from Joan O'Brien, who is the Register of Deeds at, uh, the Salem Registry. Basically to comply with chapter 40, Master Law, chapter 41, keeping the registry updated on your planning board members, including their signatures, and both the appointment and expiration dates. Um, and so he wants us to fill out the form and, uh, return it. And please note regarding approval-not-required plans, it's a requirement that this section also be completed. If the requirement is a majority of the bu, the above signatures, please specify, if only one or two signatures are require, required, but only by certain board members, please specify which members are authorized to sign and the number of signatures required. So what I would suggest is on the A and Rs, having, um, perhaps the chair and the vice chair be able to sign for A and R plans.
Both or either?
Either.
It was signed to the main.
So, uh, do you want to make a, uh, oh, you can't make a motion.
I'll.
I will also tell you that in past years, um, so the, the way the law is worded is that actually a town planner or a planning administrator can s- sign an A and R plan if authorized. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I want the board.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
So, um.
So I'm gonna make a motion that the chairman or the vice, the chair or the vice chair be authorized to sign on behalf of the planning board for any approval not required.
That's, that's already, that's already a standard procedure. Excuse me, you already, you already have that.
Right, but they need to, um, put their signatures on the form.
Right, if you, if you could sign it, I'd be happy to fill out your term, um, dates if you don't have that information.
Yeah, so I gotta sign both top and the bottom ones?
Yeah.
And then I'll just pass it around to everyone?
Did you do that? No.
I think that was a COVID thing.
I thought it was too.
Gail, you think that was just a COVID?
But that was just the chairman. I don't think the vice chair was.
Well, it might have been COVID, but it's still, it's still in place. There's not been any problem with, um, the MYLAR going through with Ron's signature. We've had one since COVID, maybe two.
So where, what are we signing?
You're signing up top, kind of, in that area.
And I'm signing up top and on the bottom, yeah.
Okay, does anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up? Otherwise, we'll see you all at town meeting. Take a, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded it?
Seconded.
Aye.
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 But adjourned. Thank you all.